Seven o'clock, so I'm going to start the meeting. Becky, if you can start recording or if you have started recording, thumbs up. So thank you all for attending again our Zoom for council meeting. And those who would like to join in prayer, Peter's joined us tonight very kindly to lead us on that. So if, just before Peter starts, if you aren't speaking, please can you keep yourself muted to avoid background noise? Thank you. Okay, to you, Peter.
I was just muted, so there was a subtle hint there, I think. Evening all, lovely to see you. This Sunday, yesterday, in the church, it was Christ the King, which is a celebration of the end of the church year and the beginning of a new year coming up next week with Advent. We're going to miss being open to the public for the beginning of Advent. But Advent's a great time of watching and waiting as we wait for, well, who knows what Boris will give us on Thursday. But so that's what's happening in the church. So let us just pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to meet in this way in these difficult times. Pray for the work of the council, for the work of North Somerset Council, for Mark and Estelle as Mayor and Mayor S, and the leaders of the Somerset, North Somerset Council. We pray that all those members serving the community in this way may always do so, knowing that there are others less fortunate and less able than some others. We pray for their families, in particular in the town. We pray for the businesses, the trades, and all those who are trying to keep their livelihoods going. And pray that people will use what facilities they can within the town rather than going online where possible. And we pray for the work of the councils and the YMCA with the homeless, for all those who are hungry. We pray for those who are lonely and struggling at this time. We give thanks for all those working in the health sector, for carers in homes, but particularly the staff in the hospital and in the hospice. And further afield, we pray for the work of those involved in medical research. With great news coming out today, as we can look forward to a new beginning, just as the church looks forward to a new beginning. So with all those thoughts in our hearts and minds, knowing that you are the God of all, we pray for this meeting, for all attending, for those unable to attend. We pray that good decisions will be made for the good of this town. So I invite you, if you wish to join me in the traditional words of the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you for joining me in prayer. If I disappear, I'm just going to take my ugly mug off the screen, but I will be listening into the meeting. So I hope for a good meeting. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. And before we go to apologies, may I warmly welcome back councillor Richard Tucker? It is lovely to see him back around the virtual table with us, and I'm glad he's looking so well. You know, so very welcome back, Richard, and it's really good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Fifty-six next week, so we'll see how long we're going for. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, don't make comments like that. I'm fifty-six already, so it worries me. Right, okay. Apologies for absence, please. Malcolm.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any. We did, there was a request for public participation from one member of the public, if I can.
Great, thank you.
Your attention.
Yes, and can you, I haven't got that, so can you tell me who it is?
That was from Nika Oppone, who I think is present on one of the screens.
Hi, Nika. Would you like to address the council? Where is she?
Hi, yes, I am here. Hi. I wasn't sure if you needed me to talk at the end or now.
No, no, Nika, no, you'd like to, it'd be lovely if you would, lovely procedure is, and it would be very pleasant if you addressed the council now.
Great, okay, thank you for this time. So my name is Necca. I'm, you know me. I'm a black person and I live in Western Supermayr. The reason I'm speaking is in support of the anti-racist motion which Catherine Councillor Gibbons has put forward. Just, I just want to say a bit because basically a lot of people find the word black as being offensive. It's not an offensive word. It's a word to describe me and others that look like me. What is offensive is not seeing my colour and thus ignoring the oppression black people face or assuming the term BAME is one homogenous group that all face the same type of prejudices. The Black Lives Matter movement is happening because of anti-black racism facing society in the UK and all over the world. We are not an organisation. We do not have membership cards or get paid. We all just believe that black lives matter and want equality. So when you hear people saying black lives matter, that does not mean we are anti-white. It's saying that everyone is against racism. If I put it another way, if you support equality for the LGBTQ community, it doesn't mean that you are against cisgender heterosexual people. I'm not here to try and convince those people who've already made up their minds to vote against the anti-racist motion because, to be honest, it's exhausting and demoralising to try and convince people who don't experience racism that racism still exists and it's addressing. Also, there's a wealth of evidence available from government reports, journals, books, articles that are available for people to read. Also, you can simply ask Google. So if you can, you know, if you continue to remain willfully ignorant, then that's on you. I'm here to speak to the undecided, those who are afraid that doing the right thing will take them out of their comfort zone, those who are uncomfortable to not just challenge racist beliefs in society but also in themselves. There is no award for doing the right thing or bonus life points, but there will be the satisfaction that when you do go to bed at night, you are on the right side of history. It takes being in discomfort to make meaningful change, but the level of discomfort you will face is nothing compared to the discomfort people of colour face every day due to our skin colour. Racism is an issue in Western Supermayr. It's not just amongst residents but also in institutions such as the police, who have racially profiled black people with no evidence of wrongdoing. In August 2012, Mr. Taiwo, a black man, who's also a family man, was a victim of a racist attack in Weston. A group of ten to five, sorry, ten to fifteen white adults surrounded his house shouting racial slurs and saying they were going to kill him. They banged his head against the wall and cracked the door open. Some of you might be aware of this story already. When the police arrived, he asked for help, but instead they arrested him, locked him up for thirty-five hours with his head bleeding, and charged him with possession of a knife. Mr. Taiwo never had a knife. It took a three-year battle for his family to get an apology from the police in 2015. Another example, we have Mr. Fofana. Some of you might be aware of him. He's another black man. He has a family and basically just wants to enjoy his life peacefully in Western Supermayr. He has been harassed over several years by the police in Western Supermayr, locked up in pepper spray for no legitimate reason. We did a GoFundMe to help him raise money for a defence lawyer, to help him clear his name. He is making progress, but it is a slow process, which should never have happened in the first place, and has devastated the quality of his life and that of his family. In the last two weeks, another black man, who does not wish to be named, but the police do know who he is, he was stopped and searched and handcuffed whilst walking on the beach. He was also, he was minding his own business. The officer said he looked like a drug dealer. Basically, they racially profiled him with no reasonable grounds. In June this year, Mikhail Hanid, who's a black man in his forties, he was stabbed to death and found on Bridgeway Road. This case is ongoing. Mr. Hanid was not a gang member. He was a kind gentleman and loved by many people. I have lived in Weston for three years. When I came here with my husband, we did so because we liked being near the sea and wished to have a happy life in an old-fashioned Victorian seaside town which hasn't been completely gentrified and is still affordable. My experience here, not as extreme as the examples I've described, but they have still affected me, have made me think many times over that I wish I had never moved to Western Supermayr. However, since George Floyd's public lynching, which a lot of people saw, have seen online in videos and on the news, I have met a lot of white allies who actually do care about racism and want to make life better for the whole community. And since then, I have, I am more determined to stay in Weston and help make this town a better place. This motion, which councillor Gibbons has put forward, is an opportunity for you to change the image of Weston to one that is welcoming, inclusive, and the community that look out for each other. It's always better to stand out for the right reasons. And I'd just like to say thank you again to councillor Gibbons and also for giving me this five minutes' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nika. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we will, of course, keep your comments in our thoughts when we are discussing councillor Gibbons' motion a little later on. Thank you very much. Okay, Malcolm, can we go on to apologies, please? I think you said there weren't any.
No, I don't have any, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any from the floor? Nope, okay, thank you. Declarations of interest, please? Okay, I'm assuming not. I can't see a hand, but there's a lot of screens today. Thank you very much. And so the accuracy of the minutes dated the 21st of September. Can I have a proposal for those minutes? Okay, and second, I proposed councillor Gibbons, seconded councillor Porter, simply because they popped up first. And for accuracy, any comments? So all those in favour of the minutes of the 21st? Please show. Yep, that's a majority. That's everybody, I think. Oh, it's carried anyway. Thank you. Communications from the mayor. You see the report. I'm not going to speak to it. Thank you, James, the deputy mayor, for covering a couple of functions. And of course, you might have seen some of the remembrance Sunday service. I think officers did a superb job, which I thank them for. It even got quite a good showing on BBC Television, which is far more than when we have to say anything because we weren't saying anything. They kept it on even longer, which is not really that surprising, I suppose. So as you can see, still very quiet, but hopefully that will change in the near future. To receive the notes of the youth council meeting in October. Who do we have on the youth council? It's so would someone who, would anyone like to speak to it from our youth council representatives? So Sarah or?
Yeah, we had, we've had a good couple of meetings. We've got some new members, which is super because obviously there's constant turnover with the age restrictions and other pressures. I think I've been forgiven by my colleagues, councillor Sase and councillor Cronley, for sort of volunteering us as town councillors to do a bit of a workshop with the youth councillors just to try to demystify some of the structures and the jargon and work out what we're all about. So we're working on that together, the three of us at the moment, and working with the youth councillors in December. But yeah, it feels pretty positive at the moment.
That's great. And councillor Sase, councillor Cronley, do you want to add anything?
Nothing from me, no.
Well, Ella, anything? But anyway, thank you for all your work you put in there. All councillors, I'm sure appreciate it.
Councillor Clayton has his hands up, chairman.
Councillor Clayton, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, really. Are you still taking on members for the youth council?
Yeah, always, constantly.
Yeah, okay. It's just that I've got, my stepson's quite keen to join, but obviously he was living in Banwell before, so couldn't apply, but now obviously he's living in Weston.
Yeah, everyone's very, very welcome. We try not to make it too stiff and scary, so yeah, very welcome indeed.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. So we note those minutes. Thank you very much. We have two presentations tonight. We are going to effectively use fifteen minutes. If the presentations sort of ten minutes and five minutes questions, or if the presentations are five minute, then ten minute questions. I am going to be fairly strict about this because we do have a long evening. So it's CityFibre presentation first. Catherine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was warned about the timing in advance, so I promise to be closer to five than ten, and I'll happily answer any questions you have afterwards. I'll just share my screen and get underway. Can you see my presentation? Okay, you should be seeing a page that says
Yes.
"World-class digital infrastructure". Thank you. CityFibre was founded in 2011 to bring a brand-new digital infrastructure platform for the UK. Our aim was to change the status quo, disrupt the UK market in a positive way, and spark change for the nation by rolling out best-in-class full-fibre networks to as much of the country as possible. Today, CityFibre is one of the largest fibre builders in the UK, operating a pure wholesale model and with a stated target to serve eight million UK homes and businesses with full fibre connectivity, which will largely be completed by 2025. As well as rapidly scaling fibre-to-the-premises rollout that's already delivering gigabit-speed services for homes and businesses, our live networks serve thousands of healthcare, education, and community sites across the UK. We're not just building full-fibre networks. We're building the finest networks that the UK has to offer, foundations that can power a town or city and power the economy for the next 100 years. Our goal is to ensure that once experienced, our partners and their customers will never look back. There certainly won't be any more Five Up to worry about, Mr. Mayor. A world-class digital infrastructure that powers your business, your citizens, your mobile industry, your public sector, and your government institutions is critical. It's more critical now than the old infrastructures of railways, highways, and even airports. The infrastructure that powers economies of the future will be based on pure fibre, and that's pretty much clear everywhere. China mandates fibre everywhere now. Japan's almost entirely fibre. South Korea is fibre. Most of all of the developing countries that are ahead of the Western economies are using pure fibre for their developments. Our mission is clear. We're investing £4 billion to make full fibre available to over eight million premises. That's homes and businesses. That represents approximately 100 towns and cities in the UK, about 30% of the UK population. To enable this, we're also creating 10,000 new jobs via our construction partners, prioritising local jobs for local people. To underpin our rollout, we've already onboarded three major consumer ISPs. That's an internet service provider. And we're well ahead with a large-scale tender process which brings our build partners on board for the next four to five years. The mission we're on is one that our whole company believes in strongly. We're building a legacy for the UK, one that is driving transformational change. And we believe that if we do our job well, the UK will be in a better place. Our well-planned city design and build model is tried and tested, and it's unique to CityFibre. We design our networks to serve all of the major markets, public sector, businesses, mobile, and consumers. We aim to plan twice and dig once. Over time, we've perfected our build model, enabling us to roll out fibre-to-the-premise networks to serve all key sectors at the lowest cost per premise passed. We continue to look for efficiencies within our plan, build, and operate activities and design our networks to stand the test of time unhindered by legacy copper infrastructure or ageing systems. We provide services that operate at gigabit speeds, that's 1,000 megabits per second up and down. And within the network we build, there's enough capacity to serve 100 gigabits per second. So this is a future-proof network design. We not only believe that it's important to foster competition, we think it should be mandatory to unleash competition at the access layer, not just at the retail services layer, but in the core infrastructure itself. It's core infrastructure that provides the digital backbone for our societies in the future. Government and regulator are determined to lean in and ensure success. Huge progress is being made, and the pace is quickening across the industry. And full fibre continues to attract investor support for incumbents and for rapidly scaling players like CityFibre. Underpinning data intelligence and automation with gigabit speeds and connectivity enables businesses to innovate and thrive, and it helps local councils to achieve public service efficiencies, solve local challenges, safeguard citizens, and enrich lives. I'm sure I don't need to tell everybody how much more valuable we've all found our home connections to be during the last year. Fibre is important in the UK because out of the leading industrial countries of the world and one of the leaders in industrial, in infrastructure development for hundreds of years, the UK has fallen far behind, as you can see from this chart. We rank at the bottom tier in every league table where it relates to full fibre connectivity across our buildings, our public sector sites, mobile, and businesses. This matters because a world-class digital infrastructure is only possible with full fibre. You can't build world-class digital infrastructure with copper, coax, or aluminium. It requires a rethinking of that core infrastructure. But it's not just about fibre. It's about equipment, systems, services, automation, and autonomy. Be assured, though, the picture is a challenge but also an opportunity for reinvention. Catching up as others continue to accelerate is, in our view, not good enough. We have a clear chance to leapfrog ahead and reclaim our place as a leading digital economy. Our most mature city build to date is Stirling, where we are nearing completion. And Milton Keynes, which is a much larger build, is our longest-running whole-city build programme to date. Individual build programmes can extend to five years, and our investment in Weston will require a build of between two and three years. We're making an investment of more than £20 million in Western Supermayr. We will connect homes and businesses and are already funding training for the people who will build the network here and beyond. There will be 10,000 such new jobs in the UK over the next four years, and these are genuine new opportunities with fully funded training for people to acquire a new skill and then join one of our build partners as an employee and work on building our network. They also acquire skills that will enable them to work in the industry as well beyond just CityFibre, should they choose to do so. The map that I'm showing you is the outline of our build area for our Phase One delivery in Weston Supermayr. We're going to begin in January of next year. We estimate the investment in Weston to be just over £21 million, and that will connect up more than 40,000 homes and businesses with full fibre. We're communicating with your communities in a very structured and clear way, from identifying a supervisor in the street, and you can tell them because they wear a black hard hat instead of a white one, to knowing how to get in touch with us if something goes wrong or if your residents have a question. We have a robust plan for timely and relevant communications. We have a detailed approach in terms of geo-tagged social media, so people will start to see our adverts appearing on their Facebook, and they will receive literature like this in these very distinctive green envelopes as we prepare about six weeks out to start building their streets. We're also very keen to enable you to be aware of what we're doing and when, and to, we'd welcome your support in your communities. We have our team out and about already, looking at where we're going to be building and making sure that we have everything in place for a smooth, clean, and minimally intrusive build. There are a suite of documents and letters that we're happy to share with you as we get closer to building in your area. And you'll start to see my colleagues around in their bright orange CityFibre jackets and our green and yellow electric minis as we pound the pavements and measure up and make sure we're ready to go in the new year. How you can help us, if you feel so minded, is if there are online groups, Facebook, Twitter, WhatsApp, that your residents use that are public, we'd welcome the opportunity to provide materials that can be shared for them to know what's going on and when. Once we're past the current Covid considerations, we will gladly attend any local events you have going on, including your local surgeries or community meetings, and present as and when you see fit. Very happy to do that. And we'll share with you when we're building in your area, and we'd love to host you on a dig walk if you're interested in donning a bit of PPE and coming out for a walk and seeing a build in action so that you can better understand what we're bringing to the community and the investment we're making. I'll gladly take any questions you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions, but I'm going to go straight to, this is only because this is the order on my screen, and I'll scroll through the screen. So first, Sonia, councillor Rusay, and then councillor Gibbons. You're on mute, Sonia. Is that Peter?
Sorry.
Okay, you're with us now, yes?
Yeah, sorry about that. A couple of things, and a bit technical, I expect. One of your backers, I think, well, your bank is KBC European Bank, which I think is based in Belgium?
I don't know. We're owned by West Street and Anton Partners, and we're fully UK-registered and backed. We have full capital in the UK to the tune of the £4 billion that we've already committed. And I believe our credit line, if I can call it that, just because I'm not sure what the correct banking term is, up to £10 billion is assured. Basically, we build and then they release the next amount of equity to us for the plan built up to the £10 billion, but we are fully UK-backed and funded.
Oh, that's brilliant to hear that. That's very reassuring. And I noticed that Vodafone are already linked in with you.
That's right.
And Talk as well?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your sentence.
Vodafone, I believe, are already signed up with you. And TalkTalk, I know TalkTalk Business are in there, but is that going to include the whole of the TalkTalk network as it stands?
TalkTalk is, we bought Fibernation, which was TalkTalk's fibre network, so we're currently integrating that into our network and making sure that that has the same high-quality network infrastructure as we do across the rest of the UK. TalkTalk is offering services to some of their residential customers in their role as an internet service provider, and we are talking to them about that becoming more available nationally over time. They are, you're correct, they are our two major internet service provider partners. We are going to be announcing another major one early in the new year. And we're also talking with a number of smaller local and regional internet service providers. And the aim of that is to provide meaningful choice to us all as consumers because in much the same way as the line into my house is provided by BTO from each, I get to buy my service at home from Sky because that's the package I choose. CityFibre also operates an open network, so anybody who is registered as an internet service provider with us can sell their services either regionally or nationally, and that is something that I think you will see increasing greatly over the next 12 months.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
My pleasure. Thank you for your question, councillor Rusay.
Councillor Gibbons?
Thank you. I think you've actually touched what I was going to ask. And I was asking that really for the benefit of people who'll be watching this once recorded. And it was about your relationship with Openreach and precisely how are residents going to understand what you're offering? And I think you clarified that, that you are actually going to be And I think you clarified that, that you are actually going to be offering what Openreach offers. Are you the physical?
No, I, I, Openreach is the biggest network in the UK. Virgin is the second, we are the third and we are growing rapidly. We believe that there is plenty of market for everybody. And frankly, given how much of a dearth of good quality fibre connectivity there is in the UK, we're not remotely worried about sharing. We do build our own network and we operate our core network. Where we do cooperate, and this touches on the point I made earlier about regulation and making the core networks more accessible to everybody. If it makes sense to use BT Openreach's existing duct rather than digging under a road, then we are authorised to do that and we will gladly do so to minimise that disruption. But actually, your fibre from your home all the way back to our exchange and into our network is all over our fibre. But we might sometimes, a duct is a bit like a drainpipe for keeping the fibre safe. And we do sometimes share those where it's practical to do so.
So as you heard in the chat before we started, I literally finally, after months of waiting, had fibre fitted. In X number of months, you're up and running and changed. Will it be a simple process?
Yes, I know that's a short answer, but yes, it will. It's that there's, on a practical level, there's the contract you're in with your current provider. It may be that your provider sells through us too, in which case it probably won't be a huge transition to make. But you will, if you agree to let us connect all the way up to your home with fibre, then we'll cheerfully do so. And when you're ready, you can buy a service over it.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
Councillor Fox?
Hi Catherine, thanks for the presentation. As a ex-Openreach employee, I'm quite interested to hear, well, one of the questions I was going to ask, you've already answered. You will be using Openreach duct where it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Will you in fact be going, using Openreach or BT telephone exchange? Or will you have your own exchange?
A bit of both, honestly, councillor Fox. We will have our own fibre exchange. And the plan is that that will be situated in Hutton Moor on a piece of land just adjacent to the Hornets Rugby Club.
Oh, right, yeah.
Everything goes full fibre back into there. We're running an eight-ring network that will break out individual primary nodes which operate for about, between 300 and 500 connections each. And the initial light source from our national network back to that fibre exchange will be connecting into the BT Openreach network in Weston. And that's just a pragmatic means of breaking out for some of our service users. But we, we fully operate our own independent network within Weston.
I see.
In some parts of the country, we have, as you, I'm sure you know, we have a national fibre optic ring of eight going up the spine of the country. So where we're more local to that, we would connect straight into it. Where we don't, we, we will connect through the local Openreach exchange.
My road has already been fibre ducted by Virgin. Will you be using their fibre or will you be coming up our road with another trench?
Because our network is, I beg your pardon, sorry, I thought you'd finished.
Where, where Virgin are already existing, will you be doubling up on, on their network or will you be using their network? Because I've got fibre up to my house already.
Yeah, because our network is fully open, so we let other parties buy and sell our services over it. We will be putting our own network in. We're exploring whether there is, there is a means to share duct with Virgin in the future in much the same ways as the Openreach PIA product allows, but we would be putting our own network in.
A lot of bigging up otherwise, isn't it? A lot of disruption, a lot of disruption by putting this fibre in.
It is. I mean, I, I think our, our trenching, our narrow trenching and reinstatement is very good. And it's about two days' worth of disruption in terms of it passing your house in total. Of course, it's annoying having a dig going past your front door. But for the, for the connectivity and the future-proofing it will bring to the town, we hope that your residents will agree it's worthwhile. But yeah, absolutely, it's frustrating when there's a dig going outside, of course.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Was there, was there anybody else? I can't see anyone else. So I have just a quick question myself. Does this, I mean, whereas Virgin, Catherine, have gone along most of the main roads and a few of the side roads, but very few, will you be entering those side roads as well? Or do we have a slower connection, connectivity because of, say, upper side road? Or do you dig through that as well? So covering side streets, the other thing, your graph showed 2.8%. Was that 2.8% of British consumers have fibre or did I misread that graph?
No, it's not that bad, you'll be pleased to hear. I'll just, I'll just look at it to make sure I read it to you correctly, but.
Definitely the bottom of the list, but I wasn't quite sure what the data was.
That, that's our, that's our world ranking in Europe in terms of penetration rates of data. It's not great. It is improving, but Iceland at the top there was 65.9. And we have actually sent engineers and product people over to Iceland to have a good look and see what they're getting right that we're not. So we are trying to learn the lessons from our neighbours. In terms of side streets, in the vast majority of cases where unless it's a private road and we're not given permission, in, in general, we will try and build everything. But obviously, if you don't want us, we won't come. We're not going to try and force anybody. We do, as councillor Fox's earlier question, we do use existing infrastructure. So either ducts under the road or sometimes telegraph poles, we can come in from there and install a small box at the top rather than having to redig a road if that's how the service is supplied to a home as well. We're pretty pragmatic about how we do it, but we'll do our absolute best to connect everything.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't think there's any further questions. Please shout if there is, because it's hard to see everybody on screen. But I don't think so. And thank you very much for, for coming and presenting to us tonight. It is fascinating. I'm sure that everybody appreciates the importance of fibre. Having a whirling thing in the middle of your screen these days isn't now acceptable where it was five years ago. And, and as we do most of the things that we do, not through television but through online, most of the things we watch, et cetera. So it's really good news, I think. And the, and the business community undoubtedly will just, just grasp at the opportunity when it gets into the, into the town. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just before you finish, I did put meander, but you've never picked up. I just wanted to say that I've been in discussion with Catherine and I thought it was really important to, you know, bring this to the meeting tonight because it is a massive investment to Weston, you know, over 20-odd million pounds. Not only that, you know, we're in discussions about training up local people as well for local jobs to do this work as well, which is really important for the town as well. But not only that, the connectivity now going forward will make the town a lot more, you know, business-focused than what it has been up to now. So that's the three points I wanted to make. And thanks Catherine for coming along anyway.
Thank you councillor Fox for inviting me. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Jen. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave. We won't feel insulted if you want to go and have your tea.
Thank you. Very pleasant to see you all. Good evening.
And so we have an item here, community-led housing. It's really, council needs a guide and Steve Watson's kind enough to present to us tonight. I can't see Steve on the screen at the moment. I know he's here somewhere. So Steve, same thing, if you can give us five, 10 minutes and then five, 10 minutes of questions and answers.
Okay, will do. You've got a copy of this presentation already, so people don't need to take notes. And I won't read everything out from it, so please refer to it afterwards. Okay, I'm here this evening representing the North Somerset Council who have asked me to talk to the four town councils about community-led affordable housing. Because it's a, it's a sector that I've been working in for the last 10 years now. I've been involved in a lot of projects around the South West. You can see from this slide, the blue ones are complete and the purple ones are still in progress. All, all of these involve, involve the community's concern setting up something called the Community Land Trust, which I'll explain more about in a second. These are some of the completed projects that I just referred to. I think you can tell that quite a lot of them are rural, although increasingly, Community Land Trust projects are taking place in towns in the, in the South West. So we're working on one in Dorchester at the moment, another one in Froome, one on the outskirts of Peel. The Community Land Trust is set up by a community such as Weston or even a community within Weston and has these characteristics, not for private profit, to benefit that community, owning land and other assets, usually starting with affordable housing, holding those assets so that they're available and affordable for future generations and open to membership by anybody within that community. All sorts of projects can be opened, can be undertaken by community land trusts, not, not just affordable homes. Although, as I say, the projects we're involved with start with affordable homes. But some of the trusts we've been involved in, as you can see from these two, have gone on to own other assets like a shop or, in another case, a redundant school that was converted into workspace. We've been involved in setting up over 50 community land trusts over the last 10 years, working with a lot of local authorities, including North Somerset Council, who have come to see this as not, not in any way an eccentric part of the affordable housing sector, but an increasingly important one. Because it involves people being involved in bringing forward their own projects, leading their own projects. And in the end, it involves projects that people actually support and want, which isn't always the case with new housing. The most common model in our experience is one where a local trust run by volunteers leads the project by identifying land, agreeing the number of homes, leading on the design and the occupancy criteria. By occupancy criteria, I mean where people with a connection to that community have priority. And also then selecting a housing association or registered provider as a partner. The trust then owns the freehold of the development and the housing association, that's the heavy lifting, if you like, by funding, developing and operating the homes under a long-term lease. There are enough benefits in this model for it to have been a real attraction to the communities that we've worked with and listed at the bottom. Quite a, quite a, a number of housing associations have become involved in this approach over the last 10 years. And in fact, there's another couple that I would add to the list of the housing associations you see there. Now, in order to offer something to the towns in North Somerset, the North Somerset Council has been through its own land holdings and found some of the smaller potential sites. And I emphasise the word potential because whether they're used or not is very much down to each community. So potential sites that those communities might like to consider for affordable housing projects. You know these places better than I do. I don't live in Weston, I actually live in Mendip. So this sift of North Somerset Council land has resulted in small pockets of land being identified in Staples Green, Constable Drive and Wentworth Close. Now, I really would re-emphasise that the, the, these aren't on the screen as proposals for housing development, but just as pieces of land that the council owns, which it's saying may be considered if the, if a local community land trust might like to consider them. And they're willing to offer the land at twice agricultural value, which is a pretty nominal amount for the building land. And would very, very much encourage a community land trust to build very, very high energy efficiency homes on them. Because there's a low land value, there's no emphasis at all on packing any of these pieces of land with as many homes as possible, just as many as it seems appropriate. It may be that a, a local trust, if one was set up, wouldn't regard any of these pieces of land as appropriate. But might have ideas of its own. And we support a lot of trusts in searching for land, both within and outside the settlement boundary. So to conclude, I've provided a report to the town council which summarises what I've just said and it's been circulated to the members. And it simply recommends that, or it simply asks the question, does the town council support the idea of setting up a community land trust in Weston to lead the development of affordable homes for people with a connection to Weston? And if it does, in principle, would the town council willing, be willing to convene a public meeting, which could, could be online, of course, if we're still under the present conditions, to explain this concept to people attending that public meeting and seek volunteers to form the steering group and in due course, the, the board of such a community land trust? And all I've, all I've been asked to do at the moment is to sound out the four town councils about this proposal and then to report back to North Somerset Council to discuss the implications in terms of then providing support for those trusts, which is a role, I say, that, that I've been involved with for the last 10 years. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I will go to questions straight away and I will ask mine unless there's no one straight away to ask any questions and then I'll ask mine whilst other people are thinking. Steve, I can't see any immediately. Do, does this give the opportunity for the community, the group who decide to set up the Community Led Housing Association or whatever you, whatever you call it, the opportunity to design and have a standard home? So in many cases, looking at the pictures that you showed, lifting the sort of standard home that some people would normally be able to afford or be able to have?
Yes, we've been fortunate over the past few years in that the government's provided grant funding to community land trusts to employ their own architects, engineers, surveyors and so on. So they have been able to commission professional advisers to, to design the schemes that they want to lead.
Right, thanks. Councillor Crawford-Hallie and then councillor Thornton.
Thanks, Mark. This is, this is really interesting stuff. The maps you put on the screen is, is, I mean, I can't actually draw to mind the precise boundaries of those bits of land. But are they possibly pieces of land which are in public use as open space? And this is one way in which the, the general landowner is able to absolve themselves of keeping those sites tidily in use by offering them for housing. That's the first question.
Okay, they're not designated open space in the sense of being, you know, shaded as such in the local plan. But they are pieces of land that have been left as open space following previous housing developments that might be considered for, you know, infill development or not.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so there is the possibility then that land which had been specifically designed to be undeveloped as part of a housing area is potentially there to be developed. I mean, this is an age-old trick, isn't it? It, it, councils have for many years been looking at their land areas. It councils have for many years been looking at their land areas to see if they can get rid of extra bits of land. And it all diminishes what's on offer to the existing communities, the the bits of land where kids knock a ball around or play, we suddenly find being taken to be built on. I think there is a danger there, though I'm not speaking specifically about these sites, because I can't actually draw them to to mind. The other point is, I'm not quite sure of the role of the town council in this. You say to call a meeting so that people can have a matter about it, but are town and parish councils actively involved becoming trusts and trying to to develop this sort of housing or not?
Yes, we we normally start by, because of course, a trust doesn't exist at the moment, we normally start with the parish or town council with this kind of presentation and these kind of questions, because someone locally has to organise a public meeting, you know, explain the concept and see if there is enough interest from volunteers who could come from the wider community, or there could equally be volunteers from the the council itself to form a steering group. So it's a facility, it's 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 asking the town council to facilitate that presentation.
What 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 exactly are volunteers meant to do?
They they form a steering group, which then becomes the board. I mean, a community land trust is an incorporated legal organisation. So the volunteers become the board of that organisation. And as such, it can receive finance of the type that I talked about from the government to employ its own architects, engineers and so on, and can then acquire the freehold of the schemes that it leads.
Thank you.
Councillor Thornton, then. I think Jill's after that. Yeah, councillor Carpenter after.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. When you say affordable, what does that actually mean? Because, you know, sometimes the definition of affordable is not actually very affordable for most people, and particularly in quite a wealthy area like North Somerset. My question sort of related to that really also is about are these properties to be bought? Are they shared ownership, or are they for rental? Or is that something that the, you know, the community land trust, the people themselves, and just following on from, sorry, it's a three part question, following on from John's question. Given that North Somerset are the ones pushing this and have identified the land, would not a jointly facilitated meeting between the town council, North Somerset, and maybe even one of the registered housing providers like Alliance, you know, be a better idea in terms of the breadth of expertise there? You know, that they could tell people what this is all about. Sorry, that's rather a lot, Steve.
Well, let's pick up the last one. And if I forget any of the previous ones, do let me know. But to pick up the last one, the way the public meetings normally take place is that they're, as I say, they're facilitated by the parish or town council. I I've been involved and my colleague has been involved then in probably a twenty twenty five minute presentation, going into more detail than I've gone into briefly today to explain the concept. And the district councils have been there as as observers if any questions are asked. But it's organised and facilitated by the town or parish council with presentations by us, and usually quite a long question and answer session afterwards. The reason why we don't invite housing associations to participate is because when when a community land trust has been set up, if they're going to partner with a housing association, what we try to do is enable them to have a choice of different housing associations, rather than make them feel that they're they're being, you know, married to one. Now, can you remind me of your first question?
Yes, it was really about affordability, what is affordable, and also about, you know, whether the properties are for rent or or purchase.
I can tell you, our experience is that most community land trusts want to build the most affordable rented housing they can. So about ninety percent is rented housing, and increasingly these days at social rents rather than affordable rents, you you might know, you might know the difference. So social rents being often often described as about sixty percent of open market rents, whereas affordable rents are eighty percent. So because community land trusts are very sensitive to what is affordable to their community, they they obviously want to build them at the lowest rental levels possible, which is which is a social rent. That's not to say that there isn't some that there isn't some housing for sale as well, where there's a demand for it, there's shared ownership. But the the majority of the of the demand is normally for the most inexpensive rented housing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Councillor Carpenter. We can't hear you. You're not unmuting?
That's it. I've just found the button, sorry. Yeah, hi Steve. Personally, I'm really interested in this. Because I work with young people, ex care leavers, and young people who were escaping abusive sort of family lives, etc. And there's there's a real shortage of affordable housing for them. There is supported housing, but unfortunately, that also seems to stop them sort of getting full time jobs, which sounds tough, but because the rents are so high in supported housing, they're unable to work because then they can't afford nine hundred pounds a month on a one bed flat because it includes supported. So, yeah, I would be really interested to look at, be really interested in getting involved in this sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Plus volunteer there, I think, Steve. Councillor pilgrim. And before you start, did councillor coddling signal as well, if you can? No, okay, councillor pilgrim.
Thank you. I was just wondering what the situation is if there's general support, but the residents that live surrounding the recommended areas object. So how does it, would it be forced upon the people surrounding it because of general support, or would another parcel of land be suggested?
Well, the reason I the reason I enjoy working with community led housing is that it is completely up to the community, what what they develop and how they develop it. So the the North Somerset Council is just offering these pieces of land for consideration. And there's no obligation to take them, e- even for the low value that they're being offered at. If the if a local trust felt they were all inappropriate, so be it. I'm working with trusts elsewhere who don't have any office of land, but they form themselves in order to acquire a sort of forensic knowledge of what might be available, you know, through private sector landowners. And of course, it is possible for afforded purely affordable housing developments to be built outside the settlement boundary as well, if there is insufficient affordable homes coming forward. So they don't, they don't only acquire a knowledge of what might be available within the town or village, but, you know, what might be available outside it.
Okay, so would it just just for clarification, and whilst I'm waiting for any more questions that may come forward, North Somerset currently are going through a complete asset review. Is it a case that we need to see what space they may say that is suitable for community led housing? Or do you progress along this and then look for land for community led housing?
And well, as I said, the the these are offered pieces of land for consideration, not 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 in any sense being pushed. If if they're not thought to be appropriate, then if a trust was set up, if we if I was working with them, we would, we would look for alternative sites that they felt were were suitable. That's the beauty of community led affordable housing. It's it's what the community deems appropriate, not not what a developer thinks is.
Okay. And again, just for clarity, the town council aren't expected to set up any form of the community led housing steering group. They just facilitate the ability for the public to engage and let their views be known with a public meeting?
Exactly, yes. I've worked I've worked with a lot of town councils and parish councils over the last few years, and the the request on these occasions is simply, do you support the idea in principle? And if you do, and if support could be provided through advisers like myself, wouldn't necessarily need to be myself, but through advisers like myself, would you convene a public meeting? Seek volunteers for a steering group, and then the support is is provided by people like me.
Okay, thank you. So I just need to take some advice from the town clerk on that, because as we haven't got a vote on the papers, I don't know whether we can, I suppose we could indicate whether we are in favour of that. Malcolm, could you like to? You're on mute, Malcolm.
Sorry, Mr May. Well, the items before you, you've got quite some information. I think if in principle the council is in favour of supporting the idea of this, then you are entitled to so resolve this meeting. The detail of engaging the public and hosting a public meeting would have to be worked out a little bit later. But you don't have to have a recommendation to make an in principle decision. I think you've got enough information for that, if you so wish.
Okay. I think that it's brought here because we want to give a lead. So this isn't committing us entirely, but it will give an indication to officers to whether they need to look at and to pursue and talk to Steve about the format of a public meeting and how it will be done. Like I say, it doesn't commit us to any financial or time commitment other than a meeting. Is that correct? Steve and Malcolm?
Yeah, yes, exactly. And we wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend convening a public meeting until we could be sure through the through through North Somerset Council that a steering group could subsequently be supported with technical advice. Yeah, so a couple of steps to go, yeah.
Yep, so it's just an option and and the support of an idea. So can I have then have votes in favour of supporting the movement forward of officers to talk to Steve about arranging a public meeting? So if you'd like to all show now?
Twelve, thirteen.
And councillor with it?
That's eighteen. I've got eighteen, chairman, so it's definitely carried.
Okay, any 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 against? Okay, thank you very much. So there we go, Steve. So we will, if you can communicate with Malcolm, you have now a guide that it's very much, this council's very much in favour of certainly examining and looking at that further.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, cheer up.
Thank you. Bye bye. Okay, Isemate. Local plan. Malcolm, if you'd like to lead on this, please.
Yes, well, fairly briefly, chairman, I can't in a position to give professional planning advice, but this consultation has come out. It is important, I think. It does offer alternative approaches for North Somerset to take to the local plan. There is talk in the press of the government changing the possibly changing the planning system fundamentally, but I think for the time being, we must all you on the basis of the current legal position that there are local plans. As usual, it's a very lengthy consultation document, and there's quite a lengthy questionnaire. In the past, sometimes the council has made councillors have made some comments, and I've been asked to collate them on other occasions. You may wish to resolve something or ask a very small group to come up with some comments on your behalf. So there's a number of different ways of handling this. Obviously, individual councillors, you're all welcome to respond direct to the consultation document, the link to which is on the report which I've circulated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone would like to speak to this? Councillor Croftley? Right, carry on, John.
Okay, thank you. Just to emphasise how important this is, particularly for the town and parish councils in North Somerset to to respond. It's the only way in which we can have, as a town council, some input on the way development occurs. I mean, it's unfortunate, the whole thing, the mathematics of it are all based on this awful algorithm, which which we know is is gaining less and less favour in 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 circles. But when you consider that government wants us to provide over twenty five thousand new homes in North Somerset in fifteen years, and we're only currently planning for something over fifteen thousand, and we're not meeting that yardstick, it is one hell of a problem we're we are facing. And I think it's going to be imperative that all towns and parishes have their input. I think if if we're going to as a town council, I I think it's important we should have the feeling of councillors who are not dual hatted, because some of us are in influential positions in North Somerset where we could override the feelings of other councillors. And I think it would be preferable to get the views of a cross section of councillors who are not part of North Somerset. And if in that process they want any help, as chairman of the scrutiny panel which is dealing with this, I'm more than happy to spend time helping, but I think it's important that it's the the standalone town councillors who make the running on this.
Yeah, I find myself completely agreeing with that, John. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, councillor Atherton, and then followed by councillor Crewe.
Yes, I think my biggest concern for the local plan as it is at the moment is the lack of commitment to junction twenty one or motorway traffic flow. And I know I know that North Somerset's focusing on improvements to public transport, getting people active and all that that kind of thing, which is really good. But the sad fact is, it's not enough. So this alone isn't going to fix the problems we have at the moment, let alone the problems that are going to come, you know, when you add twenty thousand more homes, more employment, like more employment areas, sorry, and reasons for tourists to visit as well. So, yeah, I think, you know, Banwell Parish Council pushed for a Banwell bypass. Churchill pushed to get rid of the garden villages. And I really think that as a town council, I'm sorry, I am dual hatted, but I do think as a town council, we should push for some kind of commitment to the M five and junction twenty one. That would be kind of, that would be my input, and hopefully some people will support that as well.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Crewe or councillor Peter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very much along the lines of John, my view is that our planning committee, with a couple of help from members with with knowledge, should meet and discuss this, because we're in a situation where if you look at the white paper, the only you could say a good thing coming out of the white paper is getting rid of this algorithm and coming up with another style of calculation. But we don't know whether it's going to give us more or less from where we are at the moment. We have to look at the fact we've got many sites within the town, which is, we've got four sites from Homes England. We've got about three and a half thousand houses still to build, which we've already got outlined in planning. The most important thing we have to take forward from our point of view with place making is anything that is done is done to a good quality, recognising people will want to live here, plenty of open space, safe walkways and cycleways. And that's just the thing. But I mean, there's a lot more detail we need to go through. And I just think maybe the way to do that would be for the planning committee to discuss it, maybe with a couple of help from some of us to give some guidance. It's been through the white paper and other things. And I agree with John on that point.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Zagaties? Dot, you're still on mute. Dot, you're on mute? Oh, you know, sorry. There we go.
I'd just like to say that I agree with John that we want a group that are focused on our town. But I also think we need to look at leisure and a whole range of facilities together. And I think it'd be really good if there were, was a small group of us who could work together. I'm not sure that our, the town council planning group is the best group to work dynamically on this.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Thank you, Dot. Oh, yes, councillor Thornton.
Sorry, just as a point of information, Mark, I think it's important to say, this is purely about housing requirement and the sites for development. So we mustn't get sidetracked on to, as much as we'd like to.
No, I was going to come on to that. Councillor Thornton?
Yeah, I just want to say, really following on from my question to Steve Watson before about, you know, what is affordable. I do recognise that our North Somerset, you know, in the local plan are saying they want to build affordable houses. But, you know, there is this rather strange definition of affordability at the moment. And I think, you know, my own view would be that the council really needs to push for a lot more social housing. And, you know, I know it's not really part of this, but for the power for the council to build council housing.
Okay, thank you. And I think it would be worth just updating Mark, councillor Atherton, that I believe the Highways Authorities, Highways England now, isn't it, are spending £4 million on junction 21. Quite clearly that we do need an additional junction, you're quite right. And it's a point that could be made, but there is £4 million going to be spent on the current, thank goodness, which will have some benefit. So, but probably not enough if you build another 20,000 houses over the next 15 years. Anyone else would like to comment? So I think what we have on the table is that the town council would fairly rapidly have to set up a, what I would suggest then from the chair, a group of councillors nominated by their leaders and preferably guided towards those who do not sit on North Somerset council. But obviously if they can't find them, then obviously those who aren't in a position, as John said. And then I'm sure John would be more than happy and Peter would be more than happy to offer advice and guidance in terms of the white paper and what's being proposed. Is that pretty much the feeling of the recommendation, John?
I don't, I don't know what the feeling is. That's my feeling.
Well, that's, that's what, yeah, but was that, we need a proposal, otherwise we could have, we could have many different types.
Yeah, I'm happy to propose that we set up a working party, preferably composed of members who are not dual-hatted. And that perhaps if group leaders could arrange to call a meeting, and if you want me to help, I'm more than happy to, but I'll not be a member of the actual committee.
And it has to happen quite.
I'm quite happy to second that, Mark.
Okay, we've got seconders, so that's what we're going to do. Of course, those who are going to be on that must be mindful that this is going to be a quick piece of work before Christmas. So there'll be quite a lot of work involved. So those in favour of that proposal, please show.
Councillor Willis.
I think that's clearly carried, Mr Mayor, if you don't need an exact number.
That's 21 or so, I think, so yeah.
Can I say to the council, there is exactly three weeks for this consultation to run. So we'll get in touch with you tomorrow, but we will need this to be set up fairly, well, very quickly.
Could I also, before we just finish, Mr Mayor, ask all councillors who want to make comments, regardless of whether you're on any committee or not, do please do so. It's a very easy process and your comments certainly would be valued, I know that, because we're going through them all.
Okay, so group leaders will recommend or talk to their groups to put people forward to this group.
Can I make a suggestion of no more than two or three from each group, Mark?
I think, I think that's reasonable as.
Yeah, yeah.
Two or three. Well, if you've got Malcolm and any others who can, if you've got rather officers plus councillor Quattley and anyone else who can offer insight, then they'll be in that group as well. And they'll get certainly a feel for the recommendations. So I'll leave that to you, Malcolm.
We'll end up just talking shop rather than getting on and just making.
Indeed. Okay. Right. And on that, talking shop, let's move on to the risk register and action plan, please. Item number nine, and is this by Sarah or by Malcolm?
I defer to Sarah on this one, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the full risk register, which is the document that we produce every year for the council, is, I think, 68 pages long. So that's already been up through expenditure and governance to have an overview of it. And from that, these risks have come out of that. These are the action, the points of risk that need action. I'm more than happy to take questions on this. To give the council some perspective behind it, this register's been done over the course of the last three months. So a lot of these actions have now been, have been actioned or are well underway to being actioned. So for audit purposes, our external auditor does require that this is seen by full town council, hence why it's here, for you to approve and adopt the risk register process and notes the actions that are there. But I'm more than happy to take any questions on individual items, Mr Mayor.
Okay, anyone like to ask any questions?
Councillor Willis, chairman, at some point.
Councillor Willis, please, you're first.
Yes, thank you. Page seven in the papers. It should, it says about staff, et cetera. Should it not state somewhere in there, 'and elected members', it speaks of all the Covid risks and, you know, all the bits and pieces to go with it. But there's not, it doesn't say anything in there about 'and elected members'. And I would have thought we should have something in there because we're, you know, I know we're not doing face-to-face with staff, et cetera, but at some point we may have. And you yourself are going in and out of the town council offices. So I think it should be some mention in there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. This has come straight from our health and safety team, the actual wording on this, it's off of our health and safety risk registers. But we can most certainly add members into that reference there. It says recommendations up to the personnel committee, doesn't it, et cetera? So I can make sure that that says personnel and town councillors, members, definitely, no problem.
Lovely, thank you.
And possibly something about available vaccines.
After today, yeah.
Helen, councillor Thornton?
Well, interestingly, Mr Mayor, that was exactly going to be my point, that we've had very good news about vaccine over, well, just today, obviously, and then last week. So we've got three potential vaccines now. The government reckon they'll have us all vaccinated by the spring. So do we need to take this into account now in terms of the thinking around two budgets?
The process, I can answer that if you'd like me to. The process is well underway for the two budgets. So we've only got a matter of weeks before they come up to policy and finance. So there will be a choice given to members. We're doing one Covid restrictive and one alternative budget. So we are doing two budgets and I would imagine that any influence that's coming down from central government will be considered at that point on the 14th of December by policy and finance. But the process is well underway to produce the two. So I would suggest just sticking with that and, yeah, seeing what happens in December. And then, of course, the final budget isn't until January for town council. So it may be considered there also.
And it's good emergency planning, really.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Oh, no, that's a cat, I thought, Helen, that was a. So we need someone to, we need to formally adopt this. So do we have a proposer, please? I'm looking at the leader, Alan, seconded by councillor Thornton, because that was the first on my screen. So all those in favour? It's carried.
Yeah.
Any against? Just here. Okay, thank you very much. Item number 10, which is a future provision of Grove Park public toilets. I'll try and keep my mouse shut.
Mr Mayor, may I move briefly?
Yes, please, but I was going to come on to you, Sarah, please, Malcolm, carry on.
Thank you. Well, if I can start, just assist debate. This procurement process was started before the incident at the Grove Park toilets, which led to their closure for two weeks and then a lot of discussion amongst councillors, including the toilets working party. However, in principle, this type of procurement, where it's an all-in-service, does offer the opportunity to the council to have very significant savings in overall costs of the service and a better service, I believe, at the same time as well, rather than a fragmented arrangement of management, cleaning and maintenance. I am aware that there are a number of questions, both about the Grove Park toilets and the future of those is still under discussion. And also that there are some detailed questions around the particular procurement and what is meant by living wage and one or two other questions. If, obviously, you may want to debate all this, but if in general you are in favour of this, what I would recommend is that you approve it, but subject to clarification with the successful tenderer of those matters, including their willingness to take it on with the future of perhaps the largest toilet location, slightly uncertain, just as a possible way through the various debates that are going on. If you're minded to approve it, of course.
Okay. So do we have a recommendation? I'm looking at the report.
On Sarah's covering report, there is a recommendation, yes. Which is the one-headed town council meeting, 23rd November, public toilets, fully maintained, cleaned and managed service procurement. And the recommendation is to approve Steve Matthews' report and appoint Healthmatic to undertake works as per the specification to the following values: annual maintenance and management, £36,600; contactless payment point installation, £5,950. And then there's a note about variation. I would say both those figures are significantly better value than of any of the other tenders. We had quite a few in, we had seven. And in terms of quality, we do believe Healthmatic will offer that. They do provide quite a range of services nationally to a lot of councils, including North Somerset and Clevedon and many others. So I don't think overall there's a concern about quality. But obviously, it's quite legitimate to have specific issues around specific aspects of the tender. I don't apparently be able to answer any specific questions.
Could I have a point of information, chairman?
Yes, carry on.
Councillor Ross here. I thought we were on 10. I haven't got anything about what the town clerk has spoken about. I haven't got any paperwork of that and I haven't seen any of that. So I'm, just tell me whether I'm confused or not.
No, so, no, okay, so I've just discovered the same. And I've gone online to find the report. So I've got the report in front of me now, but it didn't come with my papers. So, so item 10 is just the report which has been brought up for the town council meeting for today from Community Services. Do you have, I know you're on the telephone, do you have online accessibility?
I haven't got it, I haven't got it anywhere. Well, I've got difficulty getting in, but I can have a go, but.
If you search for, if you search for an email from Sam.
If I'm on the telephone, I probably haven't, no, because I drown up here. The water affects it. And if I'm on the phone now, which I am, I won't have it on the iPad.
I would only then suggest that you don't participate in the vote, but your comments would be very welcome.
I won't.
Because you haven't, you haven't been able to see the report. So anyone would like to make a comment, please? So before, I suppose before we need to do that, we need to have a proposer for the recommendation. Do we have a proposal? So councillor Porter proposing? Do we have a seconder? Yes, and councillor Jill Boot. Right, who would like to speak to this then, the recommendations? Karen, yeah?
Yeah, with regards to the contract, the contract as written. I know if some people haven't seen the contract at the moment. We have discussed this at the other meetings to do with the toilets and the ongoing issues and the future, how we're going to, you know, go forward. So what, you know, what we've all discussed, and that's with Malcolm, Sarah, other people, other councillors as well, is that, you know, we go forward with this proposal. But obviously with the caveat, you know, we look at the options of, you know, whatever comes up with the, you know, the proposed or some of the actions that might happen at Grove Park or other toilet systems and adjust as necessary when it gets to it. So I think having a discussion with the clients, a few of us, together with Malcolm, Sarah in there, would be, you know, the best way forward. Because I don't think we're going to resolve everything sat around here tonight because there's so many issues with the toilets at the minute that we need to just go through it with the contractors, with the officers, and then just come up with, you know, a review or whatever in a few months' time.
So does this, so just for my clarity, and it might be for others as well, does this currently include the running of Grove Park toilets if they were open and operating properly, but not for getting them back open? Yeah. Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Okay then, any further debate?
Councillor Thornton, seconding.
Councillor Thornton, where you go? You're on the, you're on my last page, Helen, I'm afraid, so I've got to keep squirming to find you.
No, no worries. I was a bit unclear on what the recommendation is. Is it that we agree this, but pending further discussions about the real living wage and Grove Park toilets? Is that the recommendation?
In a nutshell, yes, through you, Mr Mayor.
Yes.
That you approve it, but subject to those points being cleared. It's clearly council policy that new contractors must meet the living, real living wage condition. So we do have to clarify that before we can finally award the contract.
Yeah, because the only. The only, you know, if you read the tender evaluation document, which has been emailed to us, there's only one of those contractors who says they will meet the real living wage. And of course, they are also the most expensive, but they're also the one who answered the questions most thoroughly, unlike many of the others who in some cases just didn't answer any of the questions. So, but I'm happy as long as we're definitely going to clarify with them about the real living wage and Grove Park toilet.
Yeah, it's in the recommendation there, Helen, so.
Could I speak, Mr Mayor? So just to offer some clarity on that, as part of the real living wage accreditation process, we were asked to include it as a requirement of our procurement. So it is actually and has actually been put as a pass/fail criteria at the expressions of interest stage. So we went back to all of those suppliers at expressions of interest to ask for clarity that they did, in fact, pay the real living wage, because they would not have been issued a tender if they didn't. So it will be a pass/fail criteria. We feel we've already gone through that process right at the beginning. It wasn't a requirement to say it again at tender because it was pass/fail at expression of interest. We can ask the question again, but it would automatically be a fail if they didn't. And we have emailed and really clarified that, as I said, at expression of interest stage. So I can only be quietly confident unless they've told us some, there's some discrepancy in what they've emailed back to us, that they are real living wage employers. As I said, it was a strict pass/fail criteria at the very. As I said, it was a strict pass fail criteria at the very first stage before the tender packs went out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Any further comment? So we have the recommendation in front of us. I'm not going to read it out again because I've just lost my screen. So all those in favour of the recommendation, the report, which is with the, I'm trying to find it quickly, but it looks like we don't need to.
12, 13, 17.
All voted for, except two no votes currently, three no votes, I think, unless Jill was, was your hand up the minute ago, Jill? Yep, so.
That's at least 22, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Any against? None, no, it's fine. Okay, thank you, that's carried. And now, item 11, which is a motion presented by councillor Gibbons. She's not going to read the motion out again for anyone who's watching in.
We got item 10, haven't we, which is the report from, about the Grove Park toilets.
Oh, is that a separate report? Right, Malcolm?
Yes, I don't think, well, I don't think there's a separate item. Obviously, the Grove Park was relevant to this, but the matter for the Town Council to consider was the contract overall. Clearly, when we have a discussion with the contractor, we'll have to say the future of Grove Park is uncertain and see whether that can proceed as one of the preconditions.
Is that okay, Ian? Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay then, thank you. So yes, we are on to 11. For those, anyone, yes, Alan?
Yeah, I'm a bit confused because I thought tonight at Full Town Council meeting, we were going to discuss what members felt about whether or not the toilet in Grove Park had a future. It seems to me that that is going to go on a bit longer now. And so the contractors tell us what. I'm just confused. I thought tonight was going to be.
Who chaired the, who chaired the committee from this, sorry, Malcolm? Who chaired the committee from the Community Services Committee which dealt with this issue?
James, James Clayton, it would have been.
Is James still with us? James, do you want to add anything?
Well, I mean, as far as Community Services is concerned, we had a working group which was pre-COVID. So look at all of the toilets that the Town Council, that are in the ownership of the Town Council. Grove Park did dominate that working group, mainly around the antisocial behaviour that was, that was happening at those toilets. And the working group suggested improvements in the sense of cutting back the hedgerows and making it a bit more clearer and lighter to try and sort of, to see whether we can just, it would just disencourage the antisocial behaviour surrounding toilets. But unfortunately, it hasn't, to be blunt. The toilets are still being used as a haven for antisocial behaviour and drug use. And obviously of recent, there's been some serious antisocial behaviour at Grove Park toilets, I believe involving, involving a knife. So from Community Services' point of view, I felt as chairman that, you know, it's now sort of gone beyond the toilet working group and that it needed to be brought to council. I asked for a meeting with the group leaders, which we had. And we discussed that it would be best that full council, that council decides and debate on what would be best for the future for the toilets. But I do believe we did have some recommendations, which obviously haven't been illustrated in the agenda tonight, so I didn't know whether or not it was coming to tonight's meeting or not.
But the recommendation to be closed the toilets temporary, temporarily with immediate effect until a better solution could be found, was that the recommendation that you made? Or was it different ones? James?
Well, yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Malcolm, would you like to add?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to apologise. Councillor Peak is absolutely right and I was mistaken. I'm sorry, I'm getting tired, but that's no excuse. Community Services did actually ask for a review and discussion at Full Town Council about Grove Park to give everyone an opportunity to debate it.
Okay.
I apologise.
So what's on the table is whether we should continue providing, effectively providing the service at Grove Park in light of activities, vandalism and behaviour. Is that correct? Am I got that right? I'll have a nod from James if I can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay, fine. So that's what we're debating then? Anyone would like to comment?
Do you want me to start, Mark?
Hang on, no, hang on, so I don't forget, we got councillor, well, we got Peter and we got Sarah and we got you in. So if you go first, Ian, then Peter, then Sarah, and then I'll come to you, Catherine.
We did meet as group leaders and I thought we came up with a resolution to close the toilets until Easter next year. That was what was decided at group lead and James was present there as well. That was what, you know, not obviously the Community Services, what they said, but what we also said was that the options of knocking down the toilets should be taken into consideration. A regeneration of the area or the entrance into Grove should be part of something that we should celebrate, the use of the park as well, because we're maximising, you know, the fantastic history we got in that park at the moment. It is very dull, it is very dark there. It is an area that doesn't invite him to enter into. And I just think, my, it's my personal view, others can jump in all. But at the end of the day, Mark, I think it's something that we could take forward with a place making agency, as a group now to put in for bids, et cetera, to look at developing that front entrance and making the most of the, you know, shall we say, holiday makers, et cetera, go around the park, looking at all the, you know, the sensory in there, we got Jill's Garden in there, we got Order War Memorial in there. We've got so much history in there, but we, you know, we can sell it one enough. And the entrance doesn't enhance that at all. So we've got an old concrete toilet block, which I believe, and I might be, I'll stand corrected on this, that the disabled toilet facility is not fit for purpose, from my understanding, from our meeting that we all discussed. So it won't be used by, you know, for disability. If we put radar keys on there, they're easy to copy and used to enter. So, you know, looking at that as an option, but also looking at options around the town about where we have got toilets at the minute and where we will have toilets in the future. It doesn't necessarily have to be on this point, but there's an opportunity here to look at the Cathy situation, look at the lodge in the park, look at that particular area and make it, you know, somewhere that we should be proud of in Weston. It's somewhere where people can go and visit and enjoy.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ian. Councillor Macalure? Peter?
Hopefully I'm unmuted.
You are, you're fine.
Good. Yes, I was at the Community Services meeting and also a member of the Toilet Working Party. But many of you will know I've had a longstanding interest in the toilets generally. I think part of the remit of the full council was to discuss if our decision to close the toilets in Grove Park temporarily, well, until further notice, would be endorsed by the full council. So at least it gives me an opportunity to mention one or two things that kind of we talked around at the Community Services meeting. The, I completely agree that the threatening behaviour and attacks on staff is completely unacceptable, as is intimidating of the general public. And I can't see anyone that would disagree with that, but where does it leave us? I think it leaves us going round and round in circles again with the, with the toilets. Closing them is always a concern, especially for vulnerable people and especially in difficult times. I think it's also unacceptable that we have to continuously decide on closing the toilets when we can't seem to work out a way to keep them open. I think we, you know, been talking about this for a very long time, 15 years possibly, according to the report. And I think that there's also inherent problems with that side. The plumbing keeps backing up. If one toilet gets blocked, then often all three of them have got to be closed. I think the obvious medium term to long term answer is to have a new build toilet block, ideally an attended toilet block. I think many people are talking about that now. One for the future of the toilets, which was Ian that said, I think we need something to make Weston proud, a kind of flagship toilets. And I think this would be, although not part of the tendering process argument, something which might be a feasibility study. If we could recommend, at least if we could explore the idea of a feasibility study and decide on the costs and consents and plans in building a new build public toilet in Grove Park set further back from the entrance, which obviously causes us problems. And my personal view, it would be, that would be the way forward.
Okay, councillor Codling?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was originally vigorously waving because I thought it might help aid members, aid members to point out that the note from Community Services was within our papers for tonight, page 32, if anyone wants clarity. Just to briefly pick up, now we are debating it. I'd like to emphasise that the decision of Community Services was one that, it wasn't really a choice. We did have to act, just as councillor Macalure stated very clearly then, that we could not tolerate what was going on, it wasn't safe. And actually, it wasn't providing a toilet service for anyone in that state. I don't, I also think there was pretty much unanimity around Community Services Committee that it's certainly our aspiration to provide toilets, to work with others, to see what we can do and not to leave the vulnerable. And anybody else who wants to come and enjoy a great day out in Weston, desperately seeking a loo? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Catherine then followed by Helen.
Thank you, it's kind of been covered, but I was just going to back up what councillor Macalure says by reminding everyone that we did look very actively at relocating those toilets and opening up the entrance to Grove Park so that it would be the way it used to be when it was first built, when there was the chance of having the Heritage Lottery Fund grant. I think that was a couple of years ago. So we have taken on board the fact that the toilets, as they are now, in that position and the nature of the buildings aren't really what we want for Weston. So I'm just saying, I basically support councillor Macalure's suggestion. We have looked at this before, we should definitely look at it again.
Councillor, or Helen? Councillor Thornton?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm gonna say pretty much the same thing in support of Pete's proposal, but also picking up on what Ian said, which is absolutely right. You know, we want this to be a really nice park, well, it is a really nice park, you know, with a really nice entrance into it. And of course, people who come and use a very nice park often, you know, might want to go to the toilet as well. So that's why I think we should definitely look at a new location within the park for a public toilet. And of course, if we did choose to think about having a staff toilet, that would create some jobs at this much needed time. Thanks.
Okay, I don't think I can see anyone else wanting to speak. I am just going to make one comment, as many of you will know. Oh yes, so councillor, let me say, Sonia, please first. You're muted, you're muted still. Sonia, you're wasting all your talents because we can't hear you. There we go.
I, thank you very much for letting me speak on this one. It's an area that I use every other day, I walk past the toilets. They are extremely unattractive. They, I would never go in personally because I'm frightened of going in there and getting locked in. And therefore, I support what councillor Macalure suggested. And also, it is a popular park, as councillor Porter said. You know, it attracts everybody, the Jill's Garden. And also, I think that the group that are friends of Grove Park that are looking after the flower beds and adding to, you know, Weston in Bloom efforts are fantastic, they are wonderful. And, but unfortunately, the entrance is spoilt by those toilets and it would be very much in everyone's interest for them. We still need toilets there, I believe, but something that is acceptable to the community at large.
Thank you. As many of you know.
Chairman, may I speak at some point?
You can speak now, councillor Willis.
Thank you, thank you, it's Ross here. Obviously, Committee Services, this was my proposal, that they were shut with immediate effect until a solution was found. Because the risk assessment that I asked for, obviously, was totally unacceptable for staff, public and the operators. Perhaps I could just add something to that, to the debate, by saying, if the feeling is for the building to be demolished until such time as we were able to build and put in place proper, maybe the Town Council could look into hiring one of the toilets that you have at fairs. You know, they're like a large, very large mobile home, leisure home, that is used at fairs and corporate events, I believe. Rookery Manor used to have them at one point for weddings, et cetera, for extra numbers. Because a build is going to be quick and whilst we're, we want this done ready for next summer, when we're all going to be back to some sort of normality, we hope, and people will flock into town, perhaps that could be an interim project to look at. Because I don't think we would be able to demolish and build in time for next summer. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am going to speak now and I wouldn't, I wasn't going to, I promised at the beginning I wasn't, so I will be very brief. It is by no surprise that this is the problem, as many of you will know. I said exactly what was going to happen to these toilets. And as it happened, exactly what I said has happened to these toilets. I do have a couple of concerns. I support the, the, the proposal that Pete has come up with, but knocking them down, I don't, Malcolm will have to tell us on that. We only own the lease to these, we can't choose to knock them down. So I believe that, that decision, it really isn't in our hands if we choose not to run toilets there. And also, building new toilets in Grove Park could be an issue as well, being a conservation area and a public park. So there are a couple of issues that we will have to look at. So I suppose those things can be looked at through a review and looking into alternative opportunities. But I would just like to bring sort of the, the ideas a little bit back under control, what we might like to do and what we can do. So, am I got the, the feeling of the meeting that we want to review Grove, shut them with immediate effect as a recommendation? Review the provision and look into possible alternatives? If anyone is opposed to that recommendation, would they please say?
Mr Mayor, just to be clear, the recommendation was that they be temporarily shut with immediate effect and then have a review. Is that?
Yes, fine, temporary closed then, yeah, temporary shut, immediate effect. Yep, put that in there, make sure they're not lost. Councillor Clayton, you going to speak? You're looking like you were getting ready to.
Yeah, no, I'm just sort of, you know, in relation to the temporary closure, I think, I think that's wise and I think we're in a position to do that with how the current climate is. I know lockdown will be eased, will be eased from next week onwards. But I think, you know, with the winter months coming in, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to have flocks of people going to the park. So. So I think it would be a wise decision, you know, to shut them down through the winter months and perhaps review it back in the spring.
So the recommendation now then, I think, is that the Grove Park toilets are closed temporarily with immediate effect and the provision to be reviewed by the Community Services, I suppose, because they'll have the working party, and look into alternative opportunities. Is that okay? Okay. All those in favour of that proposal?
Councillor Willis in favour.
Twenty-two plus Roz, that's twenty-three, I think.
So, yes, yes, Mr Mayor, I think that's carried.
Okay, thank you. And so on to item number ten, eleven, the motion from Catherine Gibbons. I have asked Catherine not to read right through the motion again, based on the length of the meeting. For those who are watching tonight or are watching later on YouTube, that the motion will be available with the papers, it will be linked with that, so they can see exactly what the motion was. So over to you. Well, first of all, yes, over to you councillor Gibbons for a proposal and motion.
Right, thank you. So as you've said, I'm not going to read through it all. And for me, I had actually written out what I was going to say, but I think given the length of the meeting and the fact that Nia spoke so eloquently at the beginning of the meeting, I don't think that I could better some of the things she said with her lived experience. And I hope you all, after everything else we've been discussing, you can call that back to your minds and think about it as we discussed this. I don't think anyone can pretend that they weren't aware of the events of the summer, both in this country, but more importantly, what triggered it in the United States. And I think that we all agree that the time has come for us to confront racism, to call it out in our communities and to stand up for what is right and stand shoulder to shoulder and state clearly that racism is wrong and it must stop. But saying that isn't enough. We have to listen to the views and concerns of the communities and crucially, we have to act. And that's the purpose of this motion, it's to make our council and eventually our community an anti-racist council. Now, what does anti-racism mean? We probably all think that we're not racist. And being non-racist isn't the same thing as being anti-racist. For example, you might find yourself in a situation where there's something you think's a bit unacceptable, it's a bit racist, and you might not say anything. You might be appalled and you might talk about it with your friends afterwards and say, my goodness, I never expected that from so-and-so. But that's not being anti-racist. Being anti-racist is calling it out, is saying, every time you encounter this kind of behaviour, in some way, you say, this is not acceptable, this is not the right kind of behaviour and giving that opportunity to show people that they're wrong. You can do it in a polite, you can do it in a pleasant way, there are all sorts of ways doing this. I always remember that it's one of the pieces of training I received when I became a volunteer at Citizens Advice. One of the key pieces of role play we did was exactly that, how to deal with a client who came in, who had a real problem, who was probably a very decent person, very distressed, but expressed racist views. And one's tempted in many situations to just let it pass because there are other issues. And part of that training was to say to us, how you confront that, how you say to somebody, actually, I hear your problems or I understand that you're concerned, but that view was not acceptable. That's just an example of what we need to be doing as individuals and as a society. We cannot allow any form of racism, any form of xenophobia, any form of prejudice based on unconscious bias that we have internalised as white people. And we have, whether we like it or not, we are all products of our environment and of our backgrounds. Nobody is born racist, but gradually, through whatever experiences, what we hear around us, what we see on TV, if we're older, things were very different, ten, twenty, thirty years on television, things were expressed that are not acceptable now. But we've all taken those in and whether we like it or not, I think we all need to take a long, hard look at ourselves and accept that we need to address those issues. We need to understand what white privilege might mean. A lot of people say, oh, there's no such thing. Well, that's not the case. I mean, you've heard our speaker today talking about her experiences being a black person in Weston Supermayr. If, you know, it's different from my experience, walking down the street in Weston Supermayr, but I'm not going to get that kind of prejudice. However, I've got a funny foreign surname and I have had questions put to me in businesses in Weston Supermayr where they see my bank card, I can remember it as if it was yesterday, about two days after the Brexit vote, I went into the bank to do something and I handed my card over and I was told, oh, you'll be going home now, won't you, because of Brexit? And I found myself explaining, actually, I was born in Oxford. And I thought afterwards, I shouldn't have to explain that, it's not right. And that's not because somebody meant ill, it's because there are attitudes we all possess that we shouldn't because we don't know any different. And just think how much worse it is for people who look like, don't look like all of us here. I mean, we're not exactly a very diverse council, are we? You get, how can I put this? I'll talk from personal experience again. I have family members who are mixed race, who look very different from me, who are dark and who regularly, and I've been with them, get stopped at airports because they look Middle Eastern, maybe Arab, maybe a bit Indian, and they get stopped and I don't. This happens time and time again. This is a reality in this country and in this society. So what I'm wanting from this council is to make these commitments that we've outlined. I've stated at the first that we want to stand with black people because the lived experience of being black in the UK at the moment and in Weston Supermayr is different from the lived experience of someone who isn't perceived as black, who don't identify as black necessarily. A lot of that is the perception of other people and how they react to you. And we, as the white majority, have a duty to eradicate this kind of unconscious bias that we may have. We have to do that by working with groups that can deliver the right sort of training, to be open to understanding where we might be going wrong. And as community leaders, because in our small way, as town councillors, we are community leaders, to show the way. I've got a quote from the Bite Size, which BBC have produced for children on this, and I think it's very telling and speaks out perfectly. It says, sometimes we sit and look around and think, how can I possibly change all this? Sometimes you can't. But what you can do is make sure that wherever you go, people know where you stand, they know that you are anti-racist. That way, you become a beacon of light, you become someone who makes other people want to be anti-racist too. You can have the tools at your disposal by learning, reading and making it clear to everybody where you stand. And that's what I'm asking from you as councillors, to adopt this motion and to commit to being a beacon of light in this community, to make sure that nobody experiences one day. I mean, you can't change it overnight, I understand that. But just to make sure that we work towards a council and a community that will eradicate racism, xenophobia, antisemitism, Islamophobia and all forms of discrimination which are applied to our entire community, which is not acceptable in this century. And I want to see Weston Supermayr becoming a welcoming place for people of all backgrounds, whether they're black, white, come from Eastern Europe, come from wherever. I want everybody to have an equal chance and feel comfortable here. So therefore, I'm gonna, I hope I've been brief, but I want you to understand that one of the most important things in this motion is number eight, where we accept that we will listen to appropriate speakers on these issues and undertake training so that we really understand how we can make that difference and how we can change within ourselves. Thank you very much. I tried to be brief and I hope for a second.
Councillor Codley.
Notice of amendment, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Willis, I've noted.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to second it and speak briefly, if I may.
Yes, carry on, please.
Important, powerful motion, I think councillor Gibbons, you just spoke very powerfully, as well as your written word. And I'm proud to speak in support of this motion and second it because it's an issue not just close to, but deeply in my own personal and professional heart. And I also wanted to demonstrate how this issue, I believe, supersedes political groups and I very much hope the motion will see enthusiastic unanimous support. And it was with this passion that I responded to this issue and hoped it would be a unified response. And I first contacted councillors in June on this matter and it was heartening to receive so many supportive responses from officers and members. And I'm so grateful for councillor Gibbons for powerfully articulating the essence of these conversations and the others I know she's had in this motion. And my own observations really are that the town council has demonstrably gone beyond its pure compliance obligations in respect of its public sectoral qualities duties, but there is more that we could and should do. Institutional inequality, we know, is characterised by systems, processes, attitudes and cultures and of course outcomes, but all of these aspects are driven by and can be stripped away by each individual. So everyone taking responsibility, constantly learning and challenging ourselves and others in the right way. Lastly, I believe simply that as community leaders, we must walk the talk and not merely state what we stand against, but very clearly and unambiguously what we stand for and to do so alongside all our communities. Netka put it best at the beginning of the meeting, that we want people to choose Weston Supermayr and keep on choosing Weston Supermayr and enjoy the same rights that we all value, to be safe and respected, able to live fully, fairly and freely. So let's do our bit and make a difference. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm just checking, I'm not muted. No, thank you. So councillor Willis, you've given notice of an amendment.
Yes, thank you. It's just three short amendments on one, three and six, but I'll speak to it first, if I may, Mr Mayor.
Yes, please, you carry on.
Right, okay. The spirit and power of this motion can be lost in some of the wording. This motion also seeks to make Weston Supermayr equal to everyone, to make Weston Supermayr inclusive and equal. We have many, many diverse ethnic and cultural communities and this motion needs to be used to enable this council to strengthen what we are able to deliver and to lead by example for all our communities. And that is regardless of their creed, culture, colour, faith or gender. I hope this is supported by councillor Gibbons in the spirit it is given. Racism is unacceptable in any place in this world and it needs to be removed. We are all made the same and are all equal and should all be treated with the same respect and give the same respect. I'm passionate about anti-bullying, racism, anyone at all who suffers any of these, I will speak out and I have got into trouble myself for speaking out, but that makes no difference to me, I'm afraid, as anyone who knows me. So it's just some wording changes for councillor Gibbons, if she would take them on. So on one, could we say stand together unreservedly with our BAME and all our diverse communities? Three, could we add at the end of paragraph, for all our communities? And on six, could we replace the word produce with include? And that's because I think we need to include, we don't need to produce it ourselves. We've had all the discussions with everyone that's needed, that can give us the expert witness and evidence and reasoning, we need to include that and not produce it ourselves. Using the word produce makes it look as if we're going to write it on our own. Thank you, chairman. I think I have a second, but I can't, I don't know who because I can't see.
Hang on a second then. I mean Catherine, I don't know whether Catherine, I mean, if you had time to consider that, whether it's something you'd be happy to take on board?
Um, I would say that having, I didn't produce this motion overnight on my own, I had extensive conversations with many people in the communities we're talking about and the wording has been agreed with them. Just because we say we stand together with black people in the first line, isn't saying we're not standing with anybody else. So I wouldn't personally accept a change there, because as I say, I've gone through long discussions with various members of our black and minority ethnic communities on the wording of this. So no, I wouldn't be happy with changing that. Now, what was the next one we were supposed to be changing?
Adding for all our community at the end of item three?
Well, I would have said that it just, it's unnecessary to establish further initiatives to ensure Weston Supermayr is actively inclusive and anti-racist. It's obviously for the whole community, isn't it?
And the other woman is instead of produce but to include, because it's already been written, so councillor Willis is indicating.
Update our equalities policy.
And include, and include a plan.
Produce or include a plan? I'd have to defer to Malcolm as to whether they are, whether that's the same thing. I mean, I was assuming that we have our equalities policy and then a plan addressing matters identified by the reviewers and consultation. I saw them as two separate things.
Now, I can see your point, yeah. So does councillor Willis have a second? Please speak up if, councillor Porter, thank you. So is there anyone who would like to speak to the amendments that were made by councillor Willis? Was that councillor Appling?
Yeah, I just, I think the speaker at the start of the meeting made the distinction between black people and BAME, didn't she? And so I think, and Catherine's nodding as well, so I think this motion was produced by Catherine for a reason. I think it's changing the spirit of it a little too much and in a way that, you know, a speaker we've had has asked us not to do. So, so yeah.
So any other speakers to the amendment? So we'll take the vote on the amendments first. So I'm going to put all amendments together because councillor Gibbons has not accepted any of them in terms of just taking them on board. So all of those in favour of the amendments that councillor Willis proposed?
Absolutely. Paulie, have his hand up, Mark.
Oh, did you want to speak on the amendments, John? John or on the motion in a moment?
On the motion, please.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. So those in favour of the amendment?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, five.
Six. I think you've got six, chairman.
Again, those against the amendments?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
Eight, I think.
Eight, nine. It's at least nine, Mr Mayor, so that's lost.
It's ten, so it's lost, yeah. Call that as ten, please. Okay, any abstentions or I'll put the others down, is no vote. Okay, any abstentions or I'll put the others down as no vote? Okay, so we're back to the original motion. Councillor Crawford-Hawley.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I've spent more time thinking about this part of the agenda than anything else. But I've decided to rip up everything I was going to say. Other than to say, I'm concerned that the wording is so general, it's a bit difficult to interpret some of it. And I think it's implicit rather than explicit. I find the reference to stand together unreservedly with black people in Western Supermay doesn't put it into context. Unreservedly means what and within what context? I'm not against it, but I'm word pedantic and I just don't quite follow that vagueness. In the second item, working to eradicate racism, xenophobia, Islamophobia, antisemitism and discrimination. Not quite sure again what the and discrimination means. Is this saying that any form of discrimination needs to be challenged? In which case, I think we're probably challenging one of the psyche of the human nature. We are all prejudiced. Everyone in front of me on this screen this evening is prejudiced. You will all say things about other political parties in a way which sometimes shouldn't hate it. We all do it. We have to understand what our prejudices are and try to be civilised in the way we handle them. That, I think, is absolutely critical. When we get to the, when we get to the last part, I'm not quite sure what happened to item seven. It doesn't seem to exist. But anyhow, we've gone straight from six to eight. But eight is the one which Catherine says is absolutely critical. It's the one that I have great reservations about. I'm sorry, it smacks to me of being slightly Orwellian. The idea that we are talking about training, which will be mandatory, you must turn up. What's going to happen if you don't? You lose your job. Now, that is discriminatory. And there is an expectation for all councillors to attend. No, you send me an invitation to attend. And if I choose to attend, I will and I may well benefit from it. But I do not expect any other councillor to expect me to attend anything. That I do not accept. So item eight leaves me very, very concerned. You are telling us what to do, not inviting us to do it. End of my stick.
Thank you, John. Councillor Thornton and then followed by councillor Fox.
Just in response to councillor Crawford-Hawley, he may or may not be aware that all North Somerset Council employees have mandatory equalities training. That's the case in pretty much every council and public sector body. And the reason it is, is because as public sector organisations, we are obliged by the Equality Act. And certainly in our town council strategy, you know, we've got reference to the Equality Act. And I think you'll probably find already, and Malcolm and Sarah will correct me if I'm wrong, that town council staff already do some form of equalities training. And that will be one of the, you know, there's often a few mandatory courses when you start work at the council, as I know from having worked at North Somerset and more recently started at Southwoss. And, you know, it will be equalities, it will be health and safety, it will be data protection. So I don't see any particular issues with that. And in fact, we are obliged as a town council to ensure that certainly our staff, that is on equalities generally, that that training is mandatory. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Fox.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At some point, please.
Yes, okay, councillor Willis.
I'd just like to follow on with what councillor Thornton said. Our staff already do have diversity training. And our trainer is a lady called Ruth Langdon. And she is planning to do a course on unconscious bias. So I don't think we need anybody else coming here to give us a lecture on it, really, because it's already more or less mandatory, or in fact mandatory for our staff and advisory for councils. So, you know, I think if we get people coming from outside, how do we know they haven't got a political bias? I mean, BLM, by all accounts, are anarchists. They want to defund the police and things like that. I mean, if that's true, do we want them coming to give us a lecture? I don't think so, especially when it's doubling up on a professional person coming to give us exactly the same training or probably better, in my opinion. So, you know, I'd like to see what councillor Gibbons has got to say on my comments, whether she agrees with me or whether she thinks I'm, you know, out of order saying it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got, I'll tell you who I've got on my list so you don't have to keep holding your hands up. I've got councillor Aggies next, then councillor Willis and then councillor Codling. So in that order, please. So Dot, yeah.
Just like to respond to John because he's right that we do all have, we are all prejudiced and it's an innate thing that we have in order to, when we meet strangers, to learn to fear. But it's really important for us to look at those and understand our unconscious motivation. And whilst, whilst you feel that it's insulting to be asked to do some, ordered, I think you said, to do some training, I'm sad that you feel that you need to see it as an order. I mean, all of us are prejudiced, you said it yourself, so why don't you want to work on it? Why is that so insulting? I mean, I...
Sorry, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Mr Mayor, may I answer?
If you're brief.
It is not insulting, it is the order to attend which I find intolerable. I should be put in a position where I choose to attend. I should be expected to attend. What I would far sooner attend is a meeting in Western Supermay of people from the community who do feel aggrieved and I go to talk with them, as I do from time to time, rather than listen to somebody being brought in from outside to force us to some form of training.
Okay, thank you, John. So I'm moving on to councillor Willis, please.
Thank you, Mark. My amendment was hoping, was put in place to strengthen the wording. And as councillor Crawford-Hawley has already said, that some of the wording isn't strong enough. It was not a political reason. I didn't put it in for any other reason than to try and help get this as strong as it could be in the minutes and to be taken forward. I am concerned that this is turning into some sort of political debacle, which it isn't. This is human rights. This is about people's lives. I have worked for the last, I don't know, 20 years with people from all walks of life, whatever colour, creed, whether they are LGBT community, whomever they are. I have worked alongside people. I don't have a problem with anyone I work with if they treat me with respect and I treat them with respect. I respect who they are. I don't have a problem. It's not only councillor Gibbons who has worked with people on wording of this. I've also had conversations since these papers came out with our diverse communities that we have out there, different groups who have called me and said, I don't think this means us, it's not very clear. And that isn't what this was about. This is about everyone. So my wording was just to put in that extra bit to strengthen it. So I am disappointed that it's been used in a different way. Everybody has a right to speak and live and be safe. And if this helps it, that's fine. But I do think it still does disenfranchise those people outside looking in. Finally, Mark, if I may say, Mr Mayor, everyone, I think, knows where I stand on the issues of domestic abuse and especially under male victims. And how many times have those people who know me have heard me speak on male victims of domestic abuse? If all the services say only females suffer domestic abuse, even though the services are there in the background, a male victim will not think it's them and their right to ring. And this is very much along those lines. It is very open on certain parts of that wording. And some of our groups are feeling, our communities are feeling disenfranchised. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Ross. Councillor Codling.
Thank you, I have spoken obviously, so I'll try to be brief. I did want to substantiate what councillor Thornton had already said in terms of public sector equality duties. In a long ago previous life, I was an equality and diversity trainer for a local authority, not North Somerset. And it was mandatory for all elected members and members of staff to attend the training. And training, learning, listening to talks, having conversations, whatever we call it, it is lifelong. And also, it is nothing to fear. And surely, it's about what we bring to it, our experiences, maybe where we've fallen down. A lot of people struggle with confidence. Interestingly, the number one thing I got in terms of feedback from the groups that I trained was that they were saying, I'm a good person, I just don't want to offend people and I don't know what to say and I don't want to step wrong. So we, surely, we as community leaders, we as one council, albeit made up of different parties, different opinions, different experiences, surely, we ought to be as much of importance getting together and picking through this. And I, no, I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, councillor Codling. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was struck listening to Catherine at the beginning, introducing this motion about words and how important they are, but also how unimportant they are. And in that sense, I just wanted to say something about why I'm going to support this motion. And it's because words are really important. And I congratulate Catherine and Ross, for that matter, for the thought that they've put into the wording that they've chosen. But also a recognition that it isn't actually about the words, is it? It's about what we do in our lives and what we do corporately as a town council and as a community. So I'm going to support this motion because I want to send the message that I recognise that we have an issue as a society, that we do not treat people fairly, we do not treat people equally. And it's not just about race, but it's also about religion, about sexual orientation, about gender, about where you live, about where you went to school and numerous other things. And I just want to send the message that I get it, I understand it. This group of white, middle class people living in Western Supermay in North Somerset are not going to come up with the perfect form of words, are definitely not going to come up with all of the answers. But we have heard the message and we will try to do our best to listen to it and to respond to it and to act. And that's why I think we should support the motion and not, with all due respect to colleagues, get too bogged down in the detail. Because I think we just have to recognise we're never going to get the perfect form of words. What is important is the action that we take as a result.
Thank you, Mike. So I haven't got anyone else to speak, so if Catherine would like to sum up, please. Oh, hang on, was that James Clayton? Sorry, Catherine, can I let James Clayton just quickly speak and then will you sum up, please?
Wow.
Who else wanted to?
I think John, Crawford-Hawley indicated.
Oh, did he again? Okay, James, you go first. I'll go and have a look.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I wasn't going to speak on this motion, I wholeheartedly support it. I echo what councillor Bell has just, what he's just illustrated. I have to be careful when I speak because this is personal and I have to be aware of my stepson and how he would feel with what I'm going to say. But my stepson, his mum is white, British, and his dad is black Zimbabwean. He identifies as black. But to illustrate and, you know, really sort of put this motion and how important it is, is that, you know, he plays, and I won't say the sport that he plays, but he's in a team, in a sports team, and quite oftenly, quite often, the other kids in his team will refer to his colour and will make little wisecracks, little jokes. He comes back and he speaks to his mum and myself. He doesn't want to make a fuss over it because he is the only black child in the team. Me and my partner have spoke about this. And the conclusion we come to is that some of the other kids' parents, their parents do share racist views and that will be naturally rubbed down to the children. But we have to, we have to, we have to obviously support him with that and obviously go through the correct channels to try and tackle this racism that he experiences in his sports team. And it is really difficult, you know, it's really difficult and it can be quite upsetting. But also, we have to respect his wishes and, you know, even though, you know, in the sense of his wishes, you know, he shouldn't have to feel like that, that he doesn't want to rock the boat. I mean, that's the important thing, he shouldn't have to feel like that. But he does and we have to take that into consideration. So we're trying to work out a way of how we can tackle this and educate people for his sake and also, you know, for theirs, you know, because at the end of the day, it isn't acceptable, you know, these kids will potentially grow up into adulthood, continuing these views and continually being racist. And, you know, it is right that, you know, it is right that we look and we do start tackling this now and we start hitting it head on. So yes, absolutely in support of this motion. I think councillor Bell is right, we shouldn't get tangled up in the wording of it, you know, it's irrelevant at the end of the day. Other comments about, you know, why should we be offended by the wording of, you know, mandatory or anything, you know, we should all want to be educated, we should all want to, you know, broaden our horizons in the sense of this topic. And as community leaders, be the ones that are taking the lead with this and setting the example. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am now, I've got, if councillor Crawford-Hawley and councillor Fox can be brief because they've spoken already, and then councillor Gibbons, will you sum up? I won't be taking any further questions.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. James, thank you very much for that heartfelt few comments. The purpose of what I wanted to say was really to try to help get some thorough discussion. I find discussion online very unsatisfactory. You can't pick up nuance, you can't have, you can't see facial recognition, it just doesn't work like it does in a chamber or in a different environment. And I think online discussion is a minefield, particularly in full knowledge, everything is being recorded and will be used against you forever afterwards. Wording is not irrelevant. I've spent a lot of my life using, but words are terribly, terribly important. It's the one way we're able to communicate satisfactorily with people. Though I must say, I am not going to oppose this motion because I think it is basically sound. But I'm just concerned that we don't have the thorough sort of conversation we would probably otherwise have and without being stuck in front of computer screens. But I'm certainly not going to oppose the motion, I just wanted to be thorough.
Thank you, John. Councillor Fox and then councillor Gibbons to sum up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to echo what councillor Bell said, actually. If we have got any queries about wording, forget that, it's the gist of the motion, which I think we should all support and vote for, I certainly will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
Good, thank you, thank you for all your comments. Yes, I'm...
Um, yes, I'm being tasked by councillor Croftford-Hawley on my wording, but I did actually work with a lot of people, including council officers on the wording of this, particularly around the training side of things. So I'm confident that this hasn't upset anybody, um, in the administration of the town council. And, um, I suppose, well, I would say if the wording appears, um, not exactly vague, but if it's broad, it's because such a broad, such a vast, it's not something you can find and, and down. Regime and racism are so much a part of our society that we have to, it's broad and it is about action and the action we are going to take as councillors, as community leaders, to send that message to people that, yes, we are trying to. Part of what I said at the very start is the recognition that councillor Croftford-Hawley mentioned, the fact that some of this training, it would address the fact that, yes, we have unconscious bias. It's a bit like, um, when in academia people say, I'm going to do an objective analysis of such and such. It's impossible to be completely objective. We are all products of our backgrounds, of our cultures and all we can do in academic terms is to make sure that our audience knows where we're coming from on that. But in this context, in our society, that isn't enough. We can't just make it clear, I think the way I am because of my background. We have to try and change because the world and our community expect that from us. We can make a difference in this town by embracing the fact that we might not actually be doing the right things to combat racism, we might not be anti-racist, we might be guilty of staying quiet when we see things that we know to be wrong. And what I'm asking you to do is to support this and, and sign up for the willingness to change and to send that message to everybody in our society, everybody, councillor Willis, that we are an anti-racist council and we are becoming an anti-racist community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have the motion in front of us. All those in favour?
Two, three, four.
Sorry, did you just take the vote, chairman? I was only.
Yeah, take the vote, yeah. All those in favour?
Four, thank you. Four. My phone's failing, so have you heard it?
Yes.
Eighteen.
Thank you.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, that's clearly carried, Mr Mayor.
Malcolm, if you, I don't normally vote in any debate, but I would like to record my support for this motion, please.
Thank you, that's at least twenty-two, Mr Mayor. We're slipping between two screens, but.
Yeah, it's fine. Any against?
Two, twenty-three.
Okay. And abstentions? Thank you very much. Well, um, that's a two and a half hour meeting, which we don't do, I like to pride myself on short, quick meetings and I haven't been able to do it tonight, so apologies from me on the first, first case. Uh, any members of the public, because I think Ian might still be with us, he should get himself elected if he can handle that, um, two and a half hours of it, come and join us. Uh, but no, seriously, I'd like to thank officers for the, the time they've put in tonight and for preparing the meeting for us and those members of the public who have stuck it out, thank you for joining us and, and listening in today. And thank you to my colleagues and councillors, it has been a long one and have the rest of a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much.